No, that's, that's the elderly young in front of you.
Yeah, that's right.
Youngness from another.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't, I don't.
I got points in the last five.
Yeah, when I, when I came in office, I said, well, we've got these up a hard month. And he said, no, we've got one by eight.
That must be why my office, our building is in the very back.
I said, well, you know, all the young guy learn from me. From the elderly gentleman. I said, nothing?
Good to see you.
Uh, you too.
Good morning, how are you?
Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you, Mr. West. Appreciate it.
My last few years, what do you order this?
Is that what she mentioned?
That's it.
How're you doing, sir?
Ain't gonna stay. Good to look at her. There's all Dan going around in the dust today. See everything. She gonna whip us out.
It's no difference. I think I'd like your work.
Thank you for being here. You stand where we led and work prayer. My Commissioner Melton remains standing for our pledge.
Best part, Father God, we come to you, humbly Father, this morning, and just giving you praise and thanks, Father, for all you do for us, Father, you never forget us, you bless us every day, Father, we thank you, Father. Father, continue to, continue to bless this nation, Father, uh, we'd ask that you bless our Congress and our President. Father, we know you, we know you're in charge and you have a purpose, Father, believe that all of you. Father bless this county, be with the Commissioners' Court this morning as, as we take care of county business. Father, give us the sermon and knowledge to make the best decisions for the people of, of this county, Father. And just continue to lead, and God directs us, and we'll give you the praise and the honor in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Before we get started, I would like to introduce to y'all Chloe Edwards. She is the new employee of our HR department, will stand. I got the embarrassing. And she, welcome aboard, Chloe.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Also, right beside her is Kenny Edwards. Today is his birthday.
How old are you, Kenny?
Sixty.
I call to order the Director of Session of Vansett County Commissioners' Court on Wednesday, October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and out of eight, eighteen. Now, form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of Commissioners' Court for, and approval of same for October the fourteenth, twenty twenty. So, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton, is there any questions, discussion, or?
No, that was really good.
Okay, being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, oh, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Bill before you.
Oh, good.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
Yep, that is.
Bills to be ratified. So, we've got, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. General business, any general business, when they, they might wire us?
I think.
They have any announcements or anything?
Susan, I would like to get an update on the, when's the last day to early vote?
Okay, last day will be on Friday, October thirtieth. And it's going very well, we've gotten, as of closing last night, was twelve thousand two hundred and eight voters that voted early, I think that's a record. And then we'll just keep going.
Is there any other announcements?
The heat's gonna be on in just a little while.
They're turning the heat on. I know they're ready for it. And if there's any complaints about the heat being turned on in the courthouse, you forward them to two points.
The veterans, uh, will have a, veterans being on veterans.
Yep, veterans, they will have that. They being at the mall. You'd like to be a part of that? Any other general business? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Anyone sign up for public comments? Anyone in here sign up for public comments? No jokes out, no, no one. No, no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move to item number seven. Discuss and consider change of Commissioners' Court meeting schedule November eleventh, twenty twenty, due to that being a veteran's day holiday. Yes, the question, you will move it forward or backward, sir? I do know Kenny, that is a pyro, you said, leave it. Leave that to pyro.
Probably, yeah, it's probably.
So, what, would it be easier to go Tuesday or would it be easier to go Thursday?
It definitely be Thursday for me, because you'd have to go back to this, this new plan. But it's, I can work around whatever. Prefer it be a Thursday, better for me.
That's what Thursday to the twelfth?
Yeah.
Yes. So, I'm moving. Second, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, who's second? Okay, second by Commissioner West. To move the next Commissioners' Court meeting from November the eleventh to November the twelfth, be a Thursday, twenty twenty, due to veterans' day. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider approving list of approved officers and board members of the Vansett County Sheriff's Library for the current. Joe, is there someone across the hall to represent that, the library?
No, sir, I haven't seen anybody this morning.
Okay, you have the list before you of the, of the board, the.
Oh, we had two, yes, members, the rest are just being reappointed.
We've got, you have dates, uh, on the first page. Donna, how you say that last name?
Um, two, 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 Donna Two.
Okay, she would be one of their first, or, it's a, it's a. It's a three-year term. And then want a, Keener? That's the two of you, is that correct?
That's correct. And then the president of the, uh, friends of library and president of the genealogical society, they're the president, those are the organizations, so, okay, they may be new or not.
So, that's the list of the library advisory board, and if they're presented for approval, is there, is there a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number, item number nine, discuss and consider allowing purchase of radio reflector from Crossroad Communications for the Vansett County Sheriff's Office, West Tower, in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-one cents.
Judge, you're not, you're right. Judge, appreciate y'all for appearing for us this morning, uh, and I just wanna, I just wanna change one thing, uh, in here on the agenda. It is listed as Crossroad Communications, it's actually Crosspoint Communications.
Crosspoint, yes, my correction.
Crosspoint Communications, not Crossroad. Just to give y'all a little, a little history on this real quick, um, our duplexer at West Tower, at a West Tower location, it went out. That duplexer, it does run everything in the county with the exception of the east and south tower. So, uh, the band lane, trans ring lane, uh, a lot of fire departments, uh, they would not have regular communications out of the duplexer in that particular location. That duplexer did go out, uh, this past year. Crosspoint did, uh, they did give us one to use, uh, they, they let us borrow one. Um, and I was trying to wait till the new sheriff took office, uh, to purchase a new duplexer, I just left up to him on his budget. Uh, but Crosspoint has since got ahold of us and said that they need the duplexer that we are borrowing currently, uh, for a new project. Um, so, I've had to, uh, kinda expedite this, um, and give the new duplexer order, uh, so that we can replace the one that's currently, uh, on the system now.
Uh, I do believe we already have to replace one from the.
We did have, we did have to replace one already on these now.
You don't know what my, I probably have one, switch over one time, take it from the Commissioners' and.
Well, that was actually the, that was the West Tower.
The West Tower.
The West Tower. Is there any questions or discussion?
Uh, yes, I noticed on the bill that they charge us tax, now, the number four asking to be approved of that seven hundred is not included tax.
That, that is, that is, that is correct, Mr. West, we, I, I went ahead and got a second quote, uh, from them without the tax. Uh, I did send that over, and I have got an invoice from them already, uh, that does not include the tax. And then, and that three thousand seven hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cents, that is the cost of the duplexer without tax.
So, it's not included though, the.
Not sure.
And my, my, the reason that the, my contender here, is because they spend as it goes over twenty-five percent of that line. So, they can't do that without a court proof.
And that's a necessary thing, we can't go without that. I highly recommend.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other questions, discussion?
I'll leave the court to sign off on this bill, Judge, because I'm quite like the court order if I sign it, so I won't be signing off on the bill.
Okay, you, you need all of us, all of our signatures here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you bring it up, we will sign it right there. We're signing all of them. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion or question?
Is this, is this, well, this is binding to the.
Uh, Kenny is going to vouch it, hey, we did not vouch the bill because it is, uh, the, the, uh, the order that you give my office signs that was twenty-five percent. Her last year. And it, it will go over, I, I want him to understand it's gonna go over twenty-five percent. And it does not have a purchase order as well because my office could not issue a purchase order because it violated your court order.
But now, like, you do the purchase order, or is this one?
And same one, we just.
Okay.
Sandy, can you say?
And will be.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Item number ten, discuss and consider, uh, Rico USA contract for the three replacement copiers.
It's just a straight swap out on some expired copier, uh, and the cost is the same per month because they're under DIR contract, and the new ones are under the, the DIR contract, so it's the state price, it's the same level.
Are they? Are they colored?
One is, uh, the one for county court.
You said the same price, and we'll make sure that, okay?
Yes, we're placing.
Any color for, we're typing that color.
We're replacing like, the like, we, uh, it's the county auditor, uh, jail book in, and the county court office has a couple of them.
Is there a motion to approve the Rico's contract for three replacement copiers? So, look, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion for Kenny?
Are these new, going to new places, or are they changing that, you know?
The replacements.
Which ones, Donna, you know?
Uh, county court law, um, auditor's office, and the jail.
Any other questions or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider changes to Vansett, uh, with the county policy two B dash five as directed by Commissioners' Court during irregular session in fourteen of twenty. Dan, Dan Pearson. So, you don't, you don't. You have a, you have the, if according to what he has presented. Is that?
Well, I know we beat this thing quite a bit, but is, is there an option in here for our employees? If they have to work on a holiday, can, can they not take holiday pay, and can they take a day off? A lot of people would just like a day off. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean, when you say.
That's what he's trying to do. That's what this is all about.
Well.
You, you can, but they wind up not taking it, and they don't take it, what he's got here, you're gonna lose it, that, uh.
Because it doesn't care for it.
I understand you don't care, care for it, but that, that leaves them, what, with no option at all, and if he works, uh, part of a holiday, or whatever he's gonna get, it's automatic.
Yeah, because my staff worked on that Monday.
Yeah.
We all came and worked for our election stuff, so I'm not sure where that's gonna leave, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I know we have passed this, but where would that leave them if we had passed it?
It would have to be within the same paper.
Well, the problem you have with the sheriff's office comes back to, they get another day off, and, but we can't really. You understand that, it's an issue, so.
You're running short staff, giving them another day off just means you, it actually runs.
We're just gonna pay them for this, for a while, because if they work a holiday, you, you're paying them for it, they don't get a day off. You pay them for working.
That's the way I think we've got it set up. If you're sitting in the sheriff's office, but there's night and day between sheriffs.
I thought we were changing that too, then, we just like.
Well, that's what, what, what's our issue?
The issue is we do not have budget money for that. You budget each employee for two thousand eighty hours a year. You start paying them on holiday and day, you have just went over your budget. So, like Susan, where Susan gonna come up with her money to pay her employees? Or is the court gonna make her come up with it from her own costs? I mean, the problem is you do not, you did not budget to pay employees holiday. If that's the way you want to, to, to proceed with this, then you need to plan ahead and do workshops and budget for holiday pay.
This is not great, we talked about this two weeks ago, this is not a great amount of money. This is not gonna happen very often, with exception of the sheriff's office. Uh, it's very seldom that, that a regular employee of Vansett County is not gonna leave a holiday unless it's on, on a day that Golden Bridge or Susan at election time calls them in. The problem is, I'm telling you, these folks won't take it, and they're gonna be mad, they're gonna be right up here to this court on January the first saying, y'all beat me out of my hook. That's what's gonna happen, so, uh, I don't have a big problem with that, but it's got to be straight.
The issue I have, Mr. Pearson, is my employees, if you do your time sheet correctly, and Kenny and I have talked about this. When we have a holiday on Monday, my employees come in and work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because of the way the time sheet's set up, it pays minute by minute. My employees may work thirty-two point seven five hours. Well, the way it's supposed to be working right now is I go lower their holiday time by point seven five hours, and they only get paid for seven point seven five a holiday, and they bank the rest of it. So, now you're telling me I'm gonna start paying my girls, I'm gonna pay them the eight hour holiday plus the thirty-two point seven five hours they work, which is gonna put me on my budget.
That, that's okay, Sam, but what, what I'm saying is, is they're gonna lose it on December the third first if they don't take it.
I'm gonna make my girls go home. It's the department's responsibility.
Well, it's gotta be the department head or the, the elected official to monitor, I'm not gonna let guys take their contract if it mounts up too much. But, yeah, it's, it's only, it's only the department head and the elected official to monitor this and make them pay. There's no excuse for somebody losing, uh, at the end of the fiscal year, there's no excuse for somebody losing hours because they didn't take them.
On forty hour.
It is right.
But we paid the sheriff in hard, we paid him now.
Don't we need this right here?
I mean, the way we've got it set now for the sheriff's office, it's almost like they're gonna have to kind of separate the departments. Because the way it's working now, the sheriff's department is part of the way it needs to stay.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not talking about sheriff.
Right.
Actually, we're talking about everybody else going to the same procedure.
That's right, that's what we're, that's what this was. It, it works for us, but I mean, we're unique compared to everybody else, so, but since we've changed it, it's worked out a whole lot. Sometimes, you know, you need a day off. You, you just need a day off. I don't know, we work on it again, or whatever. You know, and you, I mean.
It's the court's pleasure, you wanna pay it.
You don't have no choice, that's what we did last week, we, we tried to write it out last week, and we said, I, we can write this out here, we got it down, I got to bring it back. So, do you mind table it?
Yes, that's.
Your next table up here.
I made my table.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Melton to table item number eleven. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider, I won't read it just exactly what it says, discuss and consider reapproving the appointment of election judges for a two-year period. Uh, it's actually a proven amended list of election judges for, for, uh, for two-year period. You have the list before you, did you wanna go with changes, Susan?
Well, what we've changed is, um, found out that by law, if you are serving, if you're an elected official in any capacity, you cannot be an election judge. So, we had four that were, and we've made those changes, so we can remove them from being judges or alternate judges and proposal.
Well, then one of them though we signed is, if we could, be an election judge.
So, what you're doing, you're, you're, you're approving, you're reapproving, uh, a formant of election judges because of that. Is there a motion to approve the list? So, I'm moving, got a, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion?
We're only approving these that are listed here, there's gotta be some others, because this is just one party.
No, you should have two, you should have two of these two here.
Okay, that's, this is, this is something that's, it doesn't say a part of it.
Okay, is that all up on Susan?
Yes, sir.
What's the list?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion second. Any other discussion or question? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, the most, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approval of check in the amount of thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars from Hickory Hills, BOIA, for Vansett County Person Four for road repairs. It's approval of accepting the check in that amount. Mr. West, you want to?
Yeah, this is some work we did, uh, in Hickory Hills, uh, on a intermodal agreement, and, uh, there's just changes to the work. But we have to get approval to accept the check.
You make the motion?
Yes.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner West to accept the check in the amount of thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars from Hickory Hills, for road improvements. Reimbursement for road improvements. Second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approving of the, the, or, anita, uh, addition, uh, addition plat in precinct four, is that yours, Tim?
Yes, it is. It, this is two lots that are flipped out of, of a large tract land. Actually, they're, they're already houses, all of the two lots, but I guess they planned to, to sign it and sell it rather than keep them or lease or whatever, so it has to go back and be planted down there too. Uh, so it'd be more improvement, and it didn't have. This is done, and it's done properly, they, they, uh, they got everything, they got their check off list, and I don't see any issues there.
Okay, you make the motion to approve them?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approving Hickory Creek, State's Flat, and Precinct Four. Hill, Hill Creek, I'm sorry, uh, Hill Creek, uh, State's.
That's mine also, we have, just, um, Thomas, you wanna talk about it, or?
No, no, it's just a subdivision going in and out on Highway sixty-four, just this side of, uh.
Field of Dreams.
Field of Dreams, and it's gonna be a really nice subdivision, we've got nearly thirty lots, and all are over nature, and there are a couple that run six or eight acres, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice.
Is that right off of sixty-four?
Yeah, right off of sixty-four.
Oh, right on sixty-four, yes.
You remember where we're on here, I'll catch you count.
Yeah.
Uh, everything can be checked off, uh, on our list, so we should be good to go.
You make that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approving Dawson R A Park Precinct one. Brandon?
Yes, sir, thank you, Dawson is, is actually producing off counteracting, uh, over Carolina Road. He's made it several times, everything he's, we've asked him to do, he's done, he's got it all ready to go. Uh, just obviously he can follow the D N E, but, um, so I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Brown, there a second? Second, second by Commissioner West, how many spot, how many?
There's ten.
Ten.
Yes, sir. He's on laundry area, I got my screen, I just gotta go over those, over there. All right?
Crossroad?
Uh, no.
Same side?
Uh, I'll be on eighteen, ten side, before you get to the, the park complex. Uh, first we go first.
Oh, yeah.
I can count that one.
Okay.
Kind of next to the tunnel there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion of second. Any other question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approving Cowie, uh, Spence, precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is very similar to what Tim saw, that's a small piece of land, about any two lots, and, uh, our current requirements, regarding the fact is, when we get our new ones in place, it won't be required. Everything's lined up, this is here, we've got any questions, I make a motion to accept.
Take that motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approving, uh, Pawnee Ranch Flat, in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is a little bigger subdivision, that's one twelve, one oh, seven fifty-one, uh. Century twenty-one, Ball College, which is, all the lots, uh, come on to the county road, there's gonna be roads built in, uh, everything's in line, they've got the water lined up, uh. Electric line, sort of, labor requirements, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion?
I do have a plaque here, and, and by which it says.
I know we still have one.
Yes, I have one right here.
Got a motion, second, any, any other discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. If you wonder if anything comes rolling, just finish that list with five plans that we just, we just approved.
Some of those plans, we can't give them in our book.
You're right. So, item number nineteen, discuss and consider accepting four thousand three hundred dollar donation for residents on Van Zand County Road thirty-seven eleven, Van Zand County Road thirty-seven twelve, apply towards road maintenance in precinct three.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, this is work out there, and this is, uh, uh, this is post donations, uh, they were, they were pleased, and they contacted me, and they said, uh, we'd like to donate some, some money back to the county from what we did out there. So, uh, there was five residents that did it on these two roads out there, a, uh, Michael Harrison donated five hundred, James Harrison, uh, wants to donate a thousand, uh, L G Shin, uh, wants to donate a thousand, Julie Miller wants to donate fifteen hundred, and Emmanuel Vasquez wants to donate three hundred. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, court accepts his donations, and that they put him in the Van Zand County Precinct three, and I would not, I'd say, I contacted these folks and told them, I look, your, your road is done for now, so I, thank you for your donation, but you better understand, this may expand on another road, and I said, use it on the road of precinct.
Thank you. Got a motion, we got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty budget amendments. Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty? That's all, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, budget amendments, you have budget amendments for four years, or a motion to approve those?
So then.
Second motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval of September twenty twenty financial and investment report in the Van Zand County trailer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioner's Court. So, we got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any discussion or questions for Kenny? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments, and county governments, approval of entry at the same, the reports minutes as matter of record. We have to get the reports submitted before you. Uh, and I always turn at this point, say, you have any comments, Mr. West? I was questioning on that the other day. Why do you always ask, Mr. West? Well, he always asks, come. So, it's not any leak of mind, so let me ask you, do you have any questions?
I prefer it, Commissioner West.
Well, Mr. West, please, uh, wait up.
We got all eighteen reports in, back there two days earlier, that's, that's in text.
And I might add, I appreciate that.
I have a motion to accept the reports. So we, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any discussion or questions about any of those reports? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. We will now enter into closed executive session of Missouri Carter Recording Office, Scott, Susan.
Which name are you looking at, you feel right?
Not showing. Three?
She's working on it.
He's off.
He's gone.
Keep that heat up, in the, in the, at sixty-four.
Birds, birds, the heat, every day.
Hear what it's saying? It said, if I don't get that heat on him, I feel like, there's a guy down sixty-four.
Across from Victor Church, uh, he has it back, uh.
Oh, but.
His cooker's going.
Smoking all the time?
Yeah, every day.
Something about that fire.
Yeah.
And it's raining.
We don't want it real over.
Yeah. And then he walks up there, he walks from there.
Pretty old, he's too bad, he's lying, swear to God.
Yeah.
All the winds and stuff.
I seen, I seen his back from a tree down the road.
We're recording.
We're on.
Okay, they, uh, we were, we're, we complained to Van Zand County, uh, regular session, Commissioner's Court, October, uh, twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Ten fifty-five, that right key?
That's right.
Yeah, about I M. They, uh. Item number twenty-six is to, and all the discussions in the closed executive session will be covered under the national, uh, two I, uh, item number twenty-six, discuss and consider reporting Van Zand County Fire Marshal position. Is there a motion?
I make this motion.
Okay.
To, to, to appoint. To appoint Danny Wilson, second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner West to appoint Danny Wilson as Van Zand County Fire Marshal, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Oh, in my, uh. That's motion second. Hold on, any questions, discussion?
Is this, uh, uh, two years from now, or, or the remaining two years of, of Mr. Lemon? I, I should, you didn't.
Re-ask.
For a two-year period starting today? I didn't know if it was, I'm waiting for Mr. Lemon's term.
Oh, okay, it's, it's a two-year term starting today. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Congratulations, Steve.
That's.
Item number twenty-seven, uh, discuss and consider increasing Van Zand County Fire Marshal salary fifteen hundred dollars, which would rank it up to a total of forty-two, forty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and AC. Is there a motion? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty-eight, is there a motion to adjourn? Got a second, got a second. Uh, got a motion by Commissioner, period, second by Commissioner Melton, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.
Hey, Danny, we're back, we're back, we said we ran that eight, eight and fifty dollars to a dollar.
That would be down.
I have our two little chickens on. Congratulations.
It's ours and don't.